A project that the county executive hackle, you know, had requested. In terms of revenue sharing, it did increase by 7% this year with 5% designated as ongoing and 2% as one-time appropriation. The legislature also appropriated more money in the state rainy day fund, paid down over 500 million in debt on MIPSers, appropriated over 1.6 billion in federal grants for increasing broadband access, appropriated over 500 million to invest in drinking water and wastewater improvement projects, and finally, more than 215 million was appropriated for local road repair and local bridge repair. While on the topic of revenue sharing, I will also highlight working on the revenue sharing trust fund bill package in a bipartisan fashion with colleagues in the House and the Senate. Essentially what this would do, and it has passed the House Committee already, so we're gaining some momentum on it, but it wouldn't necessarily provide more revenue sharing for the cities, it would just provide more certainty in terms of putting that money aside where it won't be necessarily subject to the appropriations process on a yearly basis. It's something the Michigan Municipal League has been working hard on over the last few years. It was introduced last session by Representative Tisdale and Representative Ellison, who was the former mayor of Royal Oak. And so we're hoping to gain some traction on this. Obviously, there's a lot of people, and we do have a caucus made up of former council and township folks that kind of meet and talk on a regular basis, and I'm co-chair of that, so like a local government caucus. But we feel like we've got some momentum with some of those members to try to push forward this legislation. Lastly, for residents here and at home, you know, for more information from my office or sign up for our monthly e-dos, please visit Senator Michael Weber dot com or call our office at 517-373-0994. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I gotta say, I really appreciate your responsiveness. I know I probably nag you too much. Whenever there's a House bill that I think's gonna impact Utica in a negative way, I send you that information, and we've had great discussions. In fact, I think I just sent you one this afternoon.
You did. Yeah, you did. Yeah, so I gotta dig up that. That's a new one for me, so because it's in the House, but yeah, but no, I appreciate it, so.
Well, I appreciate you looking out for the Utica residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good meeting.
Next on the agenda is the conditional use parcel 11 dash 07 dash 34 dash 478 dash 010. This is for the Come and Go Development. Is the someone for the petition are gonna speak tonight?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Thanks for the opportunity to present. My name is Dave Lemmons, and I represent Come and Go Convenience Stores as well as Maverick Convenience Stores. And I will clarify something that Tom stated and mentioned, and he had just a little bit of a disconnect between who actually bought what. Warren Buffett actually bought the business that is was, he bought a business and that gentleman then bought our business. So he did not actually buy our business directly, just to clarify. So do I have three minutes, or am I okay on time?
No, you're as much time as it takes.
Good deal. I have not had the opportunity to be in front of city council here, and I'd like to share a little bit about who Come and Go is and who Maverick is as an organization, so you know who's actually coming to the site before we dig into the specifics of site, traffic, et cetera, and a lot of the conversation. I think it's relevant, I think it's important for you guys to know a little bit more about us and who we are. We're privately held. The company has been in business since 1928, so it's almost 100 years of the convenience and fuel business. We operate approximately 800 stores in 20 states, so we're about half the country, maybe the western half essentially from Michigan West essentially, given a few states. But we are privately held, we don't do any franchise property, so anything we have, we operate ourselves. We don't give it to someone else to operate to someone else's standards. It's always to our standards. We're growing rapidly into Michigan. We've built number, we've built four stores in the western shore area and are rapidly expanding to this market. We have 14,000 employees, the vast majority of which are benefited. We're focused on building green. We have 109 LEED-certified stores in our network. LEED certification, for those of you who don't know, really essentially focus on building as green as we possibly can. We're committed to giving back to local charities. A couple of good examples would be United Way, which is maybe not as local here, but Habitat for Humanity is something we actually did a full build for them in the Michigan market this year. So it's important for us to give back to the community. Food has been mentioned, something that we do very well. We have about a thousand square foot kitchen in our stores, and we offer full made-to-order menu, so it wouldn't be what a typical convenience store offering would be. Because we do food, we also give back to the community. There's food that doesn't get used. We donated millions of meals over the last couple of years to food insecurity agencies in the communities in which we operate. So again, we try to give back to the communities in which we're part of. Each of our sites has about 15 to 20 associates. We pay top quartile in the industry, and we offer benefits to the majority of those associates. Getting to the specifics of the site, it was mentioned, obviously, where everybody knows where it is. It's the northwest corner of 59 and 53. It's about a two-acre site, not quite. It is Zone C2, and C2 as a zoning contemplates our use. In fact, the definition of this, of C2, is the general business district designed to provide sites for more diversified business types, which would often be incompatible with the pedestrian movements in the central business district and which are oriented to serving the needs of passerby traffic. That will come up a little bit later in our traffic study conversation. And locations for planned shopping centers. Many of the business types permitted also generate greater volumes of traffic and activities, which must be specifically considered to minimize adverse effects on adjacent properties. Adjacent properties here are a convenience store and a hotel. We are requesting for conditional use approval for gasoline service station, and we feel that we meet all those, all the requirements to get that SLU. And planning review, recommended approval, PC, as you all know, recommended denial. But we do feel we meet the requirements for that SLU, and we're asking for that tonight. We're certainly able to answer questions about the site plan. I think most of the conversation has been about the traffic. Jamie's our engineer with Atwell, and he can certainly answer those questions on site plan. Julie Kroll is with Fleeson Van Der Brink, can I get it right? No? Sorry about that. And she's gonna, she's, we commissioned a traffic study. After all the conversation to planning commission, we felt it was important to get an understanding of the actual facts of traffic. So we commissioned a traffic study. She'll share the results of that and the criteria by which it was developed. And I think that's probably gonna create some conversation, but I think it's gonna clarify also a lot of what's actually happening in the area. So I'm gonna turn it over to Julie.
Good evening. My name is Julie Kroll. I manage our traffic engineering group at Fleeson Van Der Brink. We're based in southeast, our offices, I'm in southeast Michigan, out of our Farmington Hills office, but we have nine offices, two in Indiana and seven in Michigan. As Dave mentioned, we've been doing, helping Come and Go roll out their projects across Michigan, so we've been working with them since 2020 on these projects. So we're very familiar with the product, what they're doing. But my group and myself, I've been doing this for over 20 years, doing traffic impact studies for development projects all over Michigan and the United States. So here, I want to talk a little bit about this project here and some of the concerns that were brought up regarding traffic. So we were asked to perform a traffic study here after the planning commission meeting. The traffic study we performed was in accordance with the MDOT criteria. So we followed MDOT guidelines, they're outlined in geometric design guidance section 1.2.4, and that outlines all the requirements per MDOT. We followed those for this study. We did data collection originally in January. We did Hall Road and M53, we did 24-hour turning movement counts back, and then when we did this additional data collection, we picked up 12-hour turning movement counts at Ketting and then at the crossover. And we use that information to model the operations of existing conditions, and then we add in the traffic generated by this site. So let me talk a little bit about the traffic generated by the site, because there's been a lot of discussion. As is typical of a gas station, a lot of the traffic is what we call pass-by traffic. And pass-by traffic is where I'm on my way to work in the morning, and I stop at Starbucks to get my coffee, and then I keep driving on the way to work. I do it just about every day. Or I'm on my way to work in the morning, and I stop to get gas, and I get the gas, and then I keep going on my way to work. So this is a very typical thing, people do it all the time. Very rarely do you get in your car, go get gas, and then go back home. You do, some people do, my husband does, I think, just to get out of the house. But that's what we call a new trip. So what you see in our analysis is this distinction between pass-by trips and new trips. So the data that we pull from is called the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the standard methodology that transportation engineers across the country use to determine trips generated by a site. And this site, and there's various different ways, different independent variables that we look at. In this case, we're looking at gas station with convenience market that has 16 fueling, vehicle fueling positions, and that's the description. There's lots of different options, but this is the right-fit lane use code for this. And in the code, it identifies the pass-by trips for that land use, which is 75%. So based on data that's collected and provided and vetted by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, 76% of the trips in the morning are pass-by trips, and 75% of the trips in the afternoon are pass-by trips, leaving the remaining as new trips, the get in your car, go and come back to your house. So you can see the majority of traffic here is pass-by. Now, it doesn't mean it disappears, it's just saying we're not adding more traffic into the network, that it's already on Hall Road, passing by the site, and will stop in, get their coffee, get their gas, and then keep going, with a small percentage being new trips coming into the network that are saying, hey, I'm gonna go to this site and then go back home. So then we look at trip distribution. In this case, it was, the majority of trips for this site is going to be from Hall Road. We looked at the traffic on Ketting Street, just adjacent, and it was a very, very low volume, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. But there's a, we can only apply a percentage of pass-by trips, as long as it's a certain percentage above the volume of traffic generated by the site. And because the volumes on Ketting were so low, it didn't make any sense to apply pass-by trips to Ketting. So those were not applied to Ketting, but the pass-by trips were applied from, to from Hall Road. Although we do anticipate some of the area residents may want to use this site. It was not considered in this evaluation. So we take all this information, we take the existing traffic volumes, we apply a background growth rate for other development that's happening to get like a future number without the site. We add this trip generation on top of those numbers to get a future traffic volume. So this is what we evaluate to determine the operations. And we look at intersection operations, and we look at vehicle queuing at the intersections to see, and that was talked about a bit, about vehicles stacking up at the intersection. Is it gonna block the driveways? How long is it gonna be? So we look at all of that in a model. It's a SINKR model. It's a methodology that's supported and used by the state of Michigan for evaluating intersection operations. We're using currently SINKR 11, and that is the current standard. So when we run the numbers, what we see is level of service, which is what we, is our measure of effectiveness. The level of service was D or better, and I know that sounds not great, but that's what we look for in Michigan at intersections in urban areas, is a D or better. A is free-flowing conditions, no delays. F means failing conditions. What we look for is mitigating when we have Es or Fs. So you'll see that in the traffic study, that we have identified a few Es or Fs, and those were on the Hall Road exit ramp. So people coming off the freeway in the right turns were currently operating at ERF. And we do offer some mitigation measures that could be considered to improve those operations, but really, that is for the traffic coming off the ramp, and that would be at MDOT's discretion if they wanted to implement those changes. So when we looked at the operations on Ketting, we were getting delays in the A, B, C range. Adding the site-generated traffic really didn't add much delay. So then we said, okay, let's look at the queuing. What does the queuing look like here? So when we added the site-generated traffic into the queuing, we saw currently, right now during peak periods, about two to three cars queued up. And then when we added our site-generated traffic, we're adding another one to two cars during the peak period. A lot of what comes out into our modeling is how those traffic signals are able to meter traffic, and that is considered in our models as well. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware that how kind of with our process works. We looked at Ketting traffic, because there was a lot of discussion about concerns that it's currently at cut-through traffic. So that's why we picked up all those traffic counts to see, do they currently have a cut-through traffic problem? So normally, when we see cut-through traffic issues, and if you'll, there's, if you have the traffic study, it's shown in our Exhibit 1, and it shows you the volume from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night of how the traffic northbound, southbound varies. And what we see is, it's pretty normalized. There's very low volumes, and it's pretty consistent throughout the day. We do see some increase in traffic volumes in the afternoon, and that's pretty typical of our post-COVID world. We're seeing a lot more traffic in the afternoon. It like builds. So we see an AM peak, it drops off a bit, comes back up starting around noon, and then builds till about 6:00, and then drops off like a cliff. So it's a very interesting how people work from home and how it's changed our, as a traffic engineer, I find it fascinating. But when I look at this graph, it looked to me like there was no cut-through traffic. So what I see with cut-through traffic is you would see huge spikes in the traffic volume in one direction at a certain time of day. And that's not what we're seeing here, is we're seeing what we would expect to see is normal traffic volumes higher in the afternoon, not a huge discrepancy in distributions throughout the day. Let's see. And then the volumes on Ketting Street, they were actually quite low. The volumes were less than 2,000 vehicles a day, which is typical of a residential street. Anything less than 5,000 vehicles a day is pretty normal for a residential street. So we didn't see anything abnormal here. A lot of times, what we see when we're doing cut-through analysis is a lot of people just don't know who their neighbors are anymore. It's just a reality of our time is you don't know who's living down the street from you. So people are, you think they're cut through, and they're actually your neighbors. We've done license plate surveys, and it, time and time again, shows pretty much the same data. When we look, we look at a lot of speed data as well, and a lot of times what we see is most of the people that are speeding are people that actually live in the neighborhoods. And that's because people that are unfamiliar in a situation they're cutting through, they drive really, really slow because they don't know what's around the next corner, what's gonna happen. Whereas if you're familiar with the area, you're gonna drive faster because you know what's around the next bend. So we didn't see a lot of data to support reasons for vehicles that were coming from the site that would be cutting through, and we didn't see any data to support there's an existing cut-through traffic problem on Ketting. So I'm, I'll be here if you have any other questions. Jamie, is there anything you wanted to chat about, about the site plan?
I guess I would leave that to those questions.
Gotcha.
If we're focused on the use, but do you have questions on the site plan?
Mr. Mayor, should I have a question?
Councilman D.
Mr. Kroll?
Yes.
Yeah. Did you guys, at any point, any 82-page document, did you guys do a consideration for zero curb cut off of Ketting and curb cut off of Hall Road alone, and what were the results, the results of that portion of the study?
Yes. So Jamie, can I borrow your?
Yes.
Yeah, so when we first looked at this site plan, there was access off of Hall Road.
Oh, I'm talking only access off of Hall Road?
Yeah. Yeah. What happened was, right here, so are you familiar with MDOT's limited access right-of-way?
I don't have it like in my favorites, but, you know.
Okay. That's okay. It's a frequent topic of discussion amongst civil engineers that work on MDOT facilities. So MDOT has designated areas for limited access right-of-way, and you can kind of see here in the hashed-out red, these are areas that MDOT has determined that you cannot have access in those areas. To get access through limited access right-of-way is a very, very difficult process, and it has to go through, Jamie, I was talking about it earlier, we've tried to do it a couple times, it takes about 18 months at least, goes through the Attorney General's Office, and you have to show just cause.
I think it'd be easier to move one agency's opinion than 5,000 residents' opinion.
I promise you.
That's what I would.
This is a very, very difficult process. They are very protective of their limited access right-of-way.
We have residents that are very protective of their streets.
I understand, but there's absolutely no way, and we could bring MDOT in, that they're gonna allow any access through the limited access right-of-way. So the only location that could go was within the influence area of the existing intersection. So there really wasn't any option to have access on Hall Road.
Okay, very good, thanks. I appreciate it.
I mean, outside of the legal restrictions, there's also creating physical restrictions there, too. I mean, the ramp is up the hill, you know, putting a driveway there also presents its own safety issues and maybe just unimprovable conditions, having a driveway at a certain slope to get up.
In addition, it would not meet MDOT's driveway spacing criteria, so even if we were to put a driveway in here, they wouldn't permit it because it's too close to the ramp, which is likely why it's limited access right-of-way.
Very good. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Chief? Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask one question, just as we're on the topic of MDOT here.
Sure.
One of the recommendations in here was changing the light timing and stuff. So as you're talking about MDOT changes, what is the timeframe to get them, if they were to approve a change to light times?
So usually, we provide them with the traffic study and our models, and that goes to Lansing Signals Unit for them to review and see if that's something they would consider. So that would come after site plan approvals, and that goes off to Lansing, and they make a determination whether they'll do it or not.
Okay. And what's the general timeframe for that?
I don't know. Depends on MDOT, but we say 30 to 60 days for them to review and comment.
Okay. You said after site plan approval?
Yeah, they're not gonna, they're not gonna look at implementing any recommendations if it's not gonna actually, nothing's gonna happen, right?
But that's not currently in your site plan? So how would that, how would the timing of that work?
So if this came through and decided to go past, then we can send this off as a recommendation, or the city can send it off as a recommendation to MDOT. So wouldn't it come through, like, from the development team? It would come from the city as a request to MDOT to review the signal timing, that it was identified in the traffic study.
But there is no guarantee the state would do it. So you're asking us to approve something based on a possibility, and if it doesn't, it just adds to our problem.
But if your site plan reflected those changes, a de-acceleration lane and cut-throughs on Hall Road, that would be locked in as that was your site plan. Right now, your site plan does not reflect that, correct?
The site plan, I would defer to Jamie regarding, wouldn't show any of the signal timing. In all honesty, you can always take this traffic study and send it off to MDOT regardless of this happening, to see if they would change the signal timing to benefit existing conditions, because it was identified in existing conditions.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions, and these are more general. Mr. Lemon, you may be, I'm guessing, the right person. At our planning public hearing, it was stated that you expected 2,500 cars to visit the new Come and Go.
Well, so she has actual numbers that trip generation would happen, right? I was asked by an audience member what I felt like the traffic counts would be going on there. I can tell you what we get for numbers of fills, and I can tell you what we get for inside sales and transactions. That doesn't, for me, always equate to the number of cars that come on and off, because some outside transactions or inside transactions, and so that becomes a bit challenging for us. We utilize what traffic study, scientific methods say are actually going to happen based upon their methods. So she would have those trip generation numbers as part of what you have in your traffic study, if I'm answering that accurately, yeah.
It just seemed like a big difference in the numbers that we were told.
And again, I'm going off of fills and inside sales transaction counts, which does not always equate to cars.
At the planning public hearing, it was said that KNG would entertain reconfiguring the driveways on Ketting to only face south, so that it would discourage.
Discourage a right-out.
A right-out. Onto Ketting into our neighborhoods. We were also told that you would consider pursuing a de-acceleration lane and access to Hall Road, yet there's not been any changes to the site plan.
Which we, we have had conversations in relationship, the ability to get access points on Hall Road or a deceleration lane, which has been fruitless.
So based on all the conversations that were had at the public hearing, everything that the residents brought up, no changes were made to the site plan, right? That's where we're at tonight?
There are no changes to the site plan.
And really, the only difference from the planning public hearing is that you've hired a traffic study to be.
We wanted to understand the reality and the factual, what was actually happening from a traffic perspective related to our site, what was existing, what was going to grow anyway, and that what would happen if we came to that site from a traffic perspective, because traffic was the vast majority of the conversation during that timeframe and planning commission, and so we felt that it was important to be able to have factual data to represent what's actually going on. We are open-minded to putting signage there if we want to, if there's an interest in us reconfiguring a driveway so that there's no right-out, certainly something we can go down that path if we, if it's something that's a request of the city. Open-minded to that. We're just, we're limited in access, right? There's one road, and to create flow onto that site to access points makes sense. We respect the opinions that there's traffic that goes into neighborhoods. It doesn't factually show out that way from a traffic study perspective. But traffic is a.
Well, hypothetically, I mean, you use the word factually in a hypothetical situation.
Well, it's a study, yes, agreed, agreed. The, you know, traffic is a, is a community-wide issue. It's not necessarily our specific issue. Obviously, we have to present what we feel will happen with traffic related to our development, which is what we try to do.
And I know during public comments, it was mentioned by one of your folks that the other businesses along Hall Road that have cuts onto Ketting or Sterre or Custard or whatever.
Yeah.
But the reality is, all of those businesses also have access to Hall Road from their property. Is that not true?
I don't know that I can answer that specifically on each of the businesses on Hall Road.
It's true.
I'll take your word for it, yeah.
Any other questions from council? Mayor Protim?
Just some, some points. Again, Mayor just brought it up, of many businesses were stated that they had entrances onto the side streets, okay? Every one that was mentioned does have direct access in and out onto Hall Road. The parcel in question does not. It was also stated that there were no present traffic hazards in the neighborhood, but this does not take into account 1,500 to 2,500, 100 more cars, okay? One of the idea is traffic going into the subdivision. The other idea is how the heck do you get out? I live on a couple of streets west of that, and in the morning, you play chicken, even though there's a light at Custard, because it gets backed up so bad, okay? One point, again, your parcel directly abuts the exit ramp for M53, so people are jackrabbiting off that exit, okay? And then you're gonna have people slowing down, trying to get into your parcel using Ketting. Based on the 1,500 car number, that's 3,000 occurrences. You have one time into your lot and one time off. But just using 1,500, if we space that out over a 24-hour period evenly, that's 60 cars per hour or one car per minute. We know that's not true, because you're going to have your direct peak times when people are rushing to go to work and when they come home to work. So you may have, just based on the inbound, you may have one car every 20 seconds. The traffic study was done on 11823 and 8823. 8823 is August and takes into account no rush of when school goes back into session, okay? You can take that, first day school comes back, and traffic on Hall Road at every place just comes to a grinding halt because the kid's going back to school and everybody going to school as far as employees and that. And last, my only comment, the name is unacceptable. It's a. It's abhorrent. So, thank you. I don't need a response. If you wish, please do.
Yeah, so those numbers, and I'll defer to Julie, those numbers are seasonally adjusted numbers that would be, reflect all of what happens throughout the year, and I'm probably not stating it correctly. So the particular day that it's taken on is not necessarily exactly what they're reporting to us.
It is reported that those studies were a twenty-four-hour period on those specific dates. So are we then blending it to make it what you want, or is it that study on that day? Because if it's that study on that day...
Traffic studies don't, yeah.
School is not in session.
So let, let me, so we, we can't collect data every single day, twenty, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So what MDOT and the prescribed methodology is, you pick up an average typical day, and then, in this case, we had multiple intersections, and what we do is we actually seasonally adjust the traffic volumes where we need to, and MDOT has criteria for seasonally adjusting traffic volumes, and we balance them through, and we balance the numbers up. So we picked, we picked the highest of each of the intersections that we have, and then we put them in our model, and we take the traffic volume. So if this intersection was collected in January and this one in August, whichever one was higher and seasonally adjusted, it gets pushed through our network. So all the intersections are, so what you saw as raw data may not be reflected in our analysis, because everything gets balanced up to get to a normalized state. So even though we pick up the counts on that day, we have to then adjust the numbers to make them to a steady state number.
That's fine.
Okay.
Anyone else from council have any questions?
Can I, can I give an explanation of the name? Right, that's come up a few times tonight. So Come and Go as a business, which started in nineteen fifty-nine by a man by the name of Tony Gentle and Bill Kraus. Tony Gentle was the father. Bill Kraus married his daughter. Bill Kraus's name starts with a K. Tony Gentle's name starts with a G. That's the genesis of the Come and Go. Has nothing to do with anything of which is being referenced in this situation, and it's actually a longstanding family name in the state of Iowa, and is, there's a Kraus Pavilion at the Kinnick Stadium. I mean, this is a very well-respected family and, and business in the Midwest. We have four hundred stores that we operated for sixty-plus years. It's a, it's a, it's a very well-respected name. I do understand the comment, and I respect your opinion about it, but it is not something that is thought of, oh, let's go do this because, nothing to, nothing to do with that whatsoever.
Again, if it's a respected name, it's not Kraus, and I don't know what the other name on the site, okay? It just isn't, so...
It's also true, tell me if I'm incorrect, that the last Kraus, who was the CEO, Tanner Kraus, I believe?
Tanner.
Just recently resigned, is that true?
Well, we were purchased by Maverick, which is FJ Management, which is the roundabout conversation about Warren Buffett. Warren Buffett bought Flying J and Pilot, and that's, that's, he, that person then bought our business. And so Tanner Kraus is thirty-five. He would be Kyle's son, who's my age. He and I went to college together, and he had run the Come and Go side of things corporately, and when the merger happened, he stepped away.
And the Des Moines Register reported that as a result of this acquisition, that they expect some downsizing to occur. It seems kind of an odd timing, where you're combining with Maverick and Come and Go, and the natural progression is usually, there's some downsizing, right? And that's what the Des Moines Register reported recently.
So, I, maybe clarify for me, when you say downsizing, in terms of...
Closing some locations and rebranding some Mavericks as Come and Go.
Sure, I mean, you know, I think, we're, we're a month into the game, so there's, there will be changes within our organization, definitely. There will be rebranding that will happen, to begin with, in the states in which we cross over, which is Colorado, Wyoming, Idaho, subtly, or Utah, the western states. That branding, rebrand, rebranding will happen more quickly. I don't have specific answers in relationship to longer-term rebranding. Corporate, corporate, they're gonna maintain a corporate campus in Des Moines, Iowa, long term, so, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, we still have eight hundred stores to operate, and it's a, it's a very big operation from a people perspective. So the people we had previously are, generally speaking, the people we have now. Now, senior leadership changes probably happen more quickly.
Any other questions from council?
What's the total project cost?
You're in the range of nine million dollars. And I'm approximating. There's a lot of variables there, but it's in that range.
Well, if there are no further questions, we would be looking for a motion to either follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission and deny special conditional use or to approve it.
I will make a motion to deny the conditional use for this parcel of state.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by O'Donnell. Any further discussion from council at this point?
I have a, I swore an oath to protect the health, safety, and welfare of my residents, of my neighbors. I've got some bullet points. Health, gas stations come with fumes, gas stations come with spills. I'm not talking about the business themselves, I'm talking about the people. When those, when that gas drips under the ground and then it rains, guess where it goes? One to one point five percent of USTs, a new phrase, or underground storage tank, one to one and a half percent fail every year. Safety. Well, and you know what, for the, for my fellow environmentalists here, this is a gas station while our planet is on fire. We're in a climate crisis, and we're talking about, thinking about opening a gas station. It's like Blockbuster coming to us in 2012, saying, hey, we want a new store here, as Netflix is wiping them out. You know what I mean? Okay. Safety. What seems to always get, put on the back burner, children, the elderly, and the disabled. There's not sidewalks in this neighborhood. If there's even a little increase in traffic, we're putting the lives of these people at Gas stations are also a magnet for crime, right? They don't attract the most savory of individuals. And last but not least, you know, welfare. The increased traffic to that street is going to drive up the cost of maintaining that street, and, excuse me, and we are already in the position where we need to make do with as much as we have already without adding more costs. As such, I will be voting in favor of what the Planning Commission recommended, which is deny. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Deion?
To kind of piggyback on Mr. O'Donnell's statement, obviously, we're all concerned about the welfare of our residents. All seven of us up here have been elected and be the advocate and the voice of our residents, and they trust us with their care and providing our opinion. You know, we've heard from our residents, we've heard, and a lot of time, you only hear from the ones that are upset. But I've been in this municipal body for six, seven years now, and at no point have I seen anyone show up in this mass to explain the disgruntlement and the concept. I love the idea of a new business and city, but I think that growth is fantastic way to build the city, but not at the cost of the residents' concerns and the safety of our residents overall, especially it's in a school zone, we're kind of in the neighborhood. But moreover, I think we're pushing a round peg very strongly into a square hole here. I think it's maybe go back, revisit the concept, maybe a different style business with less traffic, you know, restaurant, something, something there will work, in my opinion. I just don't feel like this one is it. I think that we want something there. I grew up right here, I remember my mom had an apartment right there, and before they were townhouses, or before they were, before they were apartments, right? Lived right over there. I used to play in that field as a kid, climb the trees, and, you know, I was like six years old in that parking lot, or that vacant field. But something needs to go there, agreeable, but I just don't know if this particular one is the right one. We'll find something. By my opinion, I don't think this is the, the right fit for our, for our small, little city.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks, sir.
Any further discussion? Ms. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Request has been denied. If anyone would like to leave, we're continuing our very exciting council meeting, but I'm guessing most of you were here for things that were discussed up to this point. I'll give everyone a second if they'd like to leave, and then we'll continue on. You're welcome to stay, though.
You guys are gonna miss some fun. Yeah. Catch you on Channel Five.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
All right. Moving on to department reports, I'll kick everything off. Several really great things happened this, this month. First thing I'd like to mention is the Utica Gasoline Alley Car Show. I want to thank USA Tire and Utica Lions. Last week, I believe it was last week, I had the privilege of helping present the Fowler family with checks totaling over thirty thousand dollars for their young boy, Beckett Fowler, who's suffering from brain cancer. He and his mom are still in Tennessee at St. Jude's Medical Center. The father, Brett, was here, and it was a lot of tear, tearful eyes and a lot of happiness. So thanks to everyone who came to the Gasoline Alley Car Show, who donated. We really helped a family in need, and it's one of those days where, you know, being the mayor was really, really, really worth it. So thank you to everybody. I'd also like to mention that we will be kicking off our residential Halloween decoration contest that we've been doing every year. I've got a few little goblins that are helping me. They're probably out taking pictures right now. We'll be posting them on my Facebook page and having all the visitors vote on their favorites. This year, we're giving a gift to the best house east of Van Dyke and to the best house west of Van Dyke, to make it more fair. And our good, good friends at Sergeant Reds have donated a gift certificate for each of the winners, so that's exciting. I look forward to it every year. Finally, the Nightmare on Auburn event, held Saturday, was a huge success. We estimate that we had thousands of people. It was crowded from pretty much the minute we opened at noon until we ended at eight. Had two live bands, tons of kids in costumes, lots of smiles on a lot of faces. I talked to most of the business owners that I could, with one exception. Every business owner was extremely happy with the results and wants us to continue this as a tradition every year. I also talked to many of the vendors. I know Nothing Bunk Cakes, who always shows up for Utica Vents. They were amazed. They brought more than they thought they needed, and they sold out literally every item they brought. And I heard that from several of the vendors. So all in all, it was a great success. I'd like to thank Lori Schmidt from Parks and Rec for all the hard work she did, a lot of the heavy lifting on that. And also Connect McComb, Stacy Zarco, and Tom Whitaker. We couldn't have done it without them. You know, in the past, when we've had events, it's cost the residents of the city, taxpayers of the city, upwards of seventy thousand dollars to hold events of this scale in the past. This event cost the city, I believe, three thousand five hundred bucks. We haven't done all the totaling yet, and part of that expense is a fifteen-foot inflatable pumpkin that we're gonna get to use every year. So very low cost, low, low impact to the residents and taxpayers, brought thousands of people into the city, and I think we really gave, gave a good look for downtown on that day. So thank you to everybody. And that's all I have. Oh, I would like to mention one last thing. The Reptarium, I think it's, actually, we will have one more council meeting before that. We're having a sneak preview of the Reptarium on November sixteenth. As of now, all the tickets are sold out. I think they may be opening more tickets. We're still waiting to hear if they're gonna let us do that. But it's to honor National Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. It's gonna be held on that day. As most people are aware, the owner and founder of the Reptarium and the new Legacy Aquarium, Brian Barcheck, is suffering from pancreatic cancer right now, so we're showing him support, and we're also giving folks an opportunity to see the new Legacy Aquarium before it actually opens to the public. So we're expecting that to be a pretty exciting night, November sixteenth. Does anyone else from council have anything they'd like to report?
Mr. Mayor, super quick?
Yes, sir.
I would like to, I'm, I'm not sure if it's, at the last meeting or the one before, I think it was the one before, I had pitched a fundraiser and asked for donations for Wile E. Special Needs Kids. Just wanted to update everybody and let you know that all the goals were exceed, not just met, but greatly exceeded, so, thanks everybody, excuse me, thanks, everybody. The Planning Commission meeting was canceled. I do want to, I, you know, I texted you, Mr. Mayor, but I want to tell, Mr. Diamond, I appreciate your attention to detail. Things are looking great, all right? I really like the job you've been doing. I just want to give you a little bit of, I walk my dog everywhere, right? And just, you know, little cracks that have been paved and the lines that have been painted that haven't been painted, you know, in who knows how long, just want to say I appreciate you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
A real diamond in the rough.
All right, boom, got him.
I'll be here all week.
Anything else from council to report? If not, anything from planning?
No updates. As Brad mentioned, the Planning Commission meeting was canceled. I was attending a Michigan annual planning conference in Traverse City. We will be meeting on November first. We'll be discussing some of the master plan updates, and hopefully have some of the chapters complete. My graphic artist has been assigned to it, and she'll be working on that, and we'll just be reviewing things. So please feel free to attend the meeting if you have any input, and that's pretty much it for me. I do, offline mayor, have some interesting grant opportunities that we can talk about potentially for the city.
I'm interested.
So I will maybe email you tomorrow, and we can set up a time to meet, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Amanda, what time is that, November one?
It should be at six thirty.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate it.
No report from Assessing or Building. Ms. Francis, Library Director, is unavailable tonight. Does anybody have a report from Library?
I was not able to make the last meeting.
Okay, very good. Moving on, report from Fire. Chief, hold on a sec.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, before you, I have a bill for five thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for our annual hose testing done by a private company. It was budgeted for, I just need your approval to pay the bill.
Motion by Ryan, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Ms. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Motion carries. Anything else to report?
Yeah, we're in Fire Prevention Week, and our guys are, most of the schools, and two more to go. So they're all taking care of the little kids of the city, and remember, it's Fire Prevention Week. Make sure your smoke detectors and your seal alarms work, because we're going into the furnace season, so make sure that works. They save lives.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Clusey?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two agenda items, summaries for you. The first one is proposal, looking at potential increase for the, the police officer and the command union to increase their pension multiplier. Number of months ago, I met with the mayor and had a discussion on, you know, is, is there something that we can try and increase a benefit for, for the employees that doesn't cost the city or anything, or is kind of cost neutral? So one of, one of the ideas was, let's, let's look at some funding that the employees can, can put...
Thank you, Chief. Chief Klosi.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two agenda items summaries for you. The first one is proposal, looking at potential increase for the police officer and the command union to increase their pension multiplier. Number of months ago, I met with the mayor and had a discussion on, you know, is there something that we can try and increase a benefit for the employees that doesn't cost the city or anything or is kind of cost neutral? So one of the ideas was let's look at some funding that the employees can put forth under their own pocket and is there a possibility to increase their pension multiplier? What was done was called, what's an actuary? So we give the actuary a couple situations and had a discussion with them. And two of the variables that they looked at was increasing the employee contribution from 5% to 7%. So that means from their daily or their weekly paycheck, they would go from 5% contribution to 7% contribution to the pension fund. And also looking at the possibility of eliminating the 2.5%, 457 contribution that they get. So they get 2.5% contribution into 457, similar to a 401K plan. And if they kind of forego that increased from a 5% to 7% and forego their 457, what does that equate to a pension multiplier? So the actuary came back and said that using those two variables, they would be able to go from a 1.5% to a 1.95% pension multiplier. The study was presented to the Patrol and the Command Unit and both Command and Patrol Unions agreed to go ahead and self-fund the increase here from a 1.5% to 1.95% pension multiplier. So what I'd be looking for is a request, request a motion to approve the language that's submitted with packet there to both the Patrol and Command Unions' collective bargaining agreement. And this change would be to contributions to make it effective, the payroll period ending 10/29/2023.
I'll make a motion to approve what the chief just said per his letter dated 9/13/23.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by...
Deanne. Sure.
Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Your next item, Chief.
All right, Mayor and Council, the second item I have is an Axon Body Cam purchase. And this is done through the, partially through the small rural tribal body camera program. As you remember from when we sat down in contract negotiations, one of the... Or not contract negotiation, I'm sorry, the budget hearings, one of our failing pieces of equipment is our current body cams that we have. Our body cam program has been tremendous program in not only increasing transparency, but also eliminating a lot of officer complaints and stuff. You're able to just go right to the camera and pull up issues and be able to, you know, confirm or deny what's going on. Unfortunately, our current system is failing miserably to the point that we're at the point where we have just enough cameras to sustain a shift. Mayor's office has been working closely with Senator Gary Peters and trying to get a grant for the city to actually fully fund this program. While we've been trying to make it as least cost-effective to the citizens, we're kind of at that point, we're not gonna have any active body cams. I was able to, or I submitted an application and applied for a small rural tribal body grant program. What this pays is $2,000 per camera for the cost of the cameras. And looking at what's the best for the city and how we can ensure that the Police Department still has active working body cams, but also still keep the possibility of this grant that's out there from the federal level. My suggestion, and in talking with the mayor, is let's look at purchasing five body cameras just to kind of get us in the interim till hopefully we hear something positive on the federal side there. We're looking at the cost of five body camera systems. You also gotta, when you look at the cost of the system, understand this also includes storage. Our current system operates on a server-based model and this is a cloud storage-based model. We're having problems with our current storage on a server just because we've hit capacity in the four years that we've had our body cam program. So a cost of five Axon body cameras, software storage, and activating units for our vehicles is a total of $18,950.70. That's a one-time purchase, but you're also gonna have after that the continuing software and storage fees. This is not taking into account the $2,000 that we get for the body camera grant. And part of the grant can cover, you know, administrative time, officer time to kind of get to that point. So I'm hoping that the cost to the city is gonna be about $8,000, $9,000 total for the grant included in this. So I'd be requesting a motion to accept the small rural township grant for the purchase of five body cameras from Axon with at least a 50% match that's required from the grant for a total purchase amount of $18,950.70.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Sakura, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. What is the life expectancy of these cameras and what's the protocol when they are equipped with the officers? Is it when they go on a call? Is it all the time? How does that work?
So I'll answer the second one and then I'll go back to the first one. Officers on their daily shift are equipped with the body cams, you know, from when they leave the station to when they come back. One of the pieces of equipment in this vehicle or that we're looking to add to this is the vehicle activation. So when the lights are turned on, the camera comes on. Officers are mandated by policy when they're having conversations with citizens, their body cameras have to be turned on. So any situation where they're out dealing with the public, those body cams by policy have to be turned on. And then there's also things in the vehicles. So going back to the life expectancy of the cameras. Our current system is about four or five years old and they're shot. Part of looking at this program and trying to get the best value for the citizens and get the equipment that we need, Axon recommends kind of a three-year life cycle replacement. Now, they're generally rated to go longer than three years. But what I'm looking at is hopefully trying to get us over the initial ledge of getting some cameras, getting them out there, and then hopefully through the federal grants, they have what's called a replacement program. So, and you can add this replacement, it's kind of like insurance where they replace the cameras at year two and a half, replace the cameras at year five. But initially, just to get us started and to be able to use the grant and kind of use money as effectively, I decided to kind of take away that insurance and TAP program, hoping that the federal government will be able to pick up the end game of the grants.
Thank you. And just so everyone knows, I did talk to Senator Peters' staff last week, maybe the week before last. They said, as far as they know, we have the grant. I don't know if you've been watching the news, the feds, Congress is in a lot of budget turmoil right now. So none of that money will get released or the grants, you know, the final approval contract sent to the municipalities and all that business until, you know, all the budget situation in Washington is settled. So we've been told we have it. You know, the money will be here eventually. As Chief mentioned, he just needs this equipment to get us through kind of in a holding pad or a stopgap until the federal grant money gets released to us, so... Any further discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report, Chief?
Yes, just real quick, Mayor and Council. I know the...
Oh, there was a second.
Oh, yep, I'm sorry. Yep, thank you, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment and $10,000 from the listed account.
Support. Motion by Sakura, support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, just real quick, I know the mayor's put on our city page and on his Facebook page, our new patrol vehicles have finally come in. Our guys are extremely excited. They keep trying to break into my office to get the car keys to drive home. So kind of a timeline where our outfitter is hoping that by the end of the month, we'll be able to get one car in and kind of do one at a time. So it's still, there's still gonna be a delay of process in getting them there, getting them switched over to the current equipment and stuff. Just as of last Friday, we finally received our new radios. That seems like that's been a forever project, so that's a great addition. Our guys are really excited about that and finally have some safety net to be able to call for help if they need to. They've really been on the last run. Lastly, I just want to kind of piggyback on the mayor's comments on the Nightmare on Auburn. I was unable, I was on a town for my son's soccer tournament, so I was unable to attend. But all my officers that were here really, really had positive things to say about it. A lot of our officers brought their own personal families or kids to come around. It was really well-received from our guys. I didn't have any reported issues and it really seemed like it was a positive event for the city. So just wanted to let council know that from the Police Department, everybody really liked the event that we saw.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Mr. Diamond.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three agenda items for you. The first of which is the approved budget project for Cass and Summers lot and the repaving of that lot and DPW lot. It was approved, the budget, for $130,000. The first amount to go to Cass and Summers and whatever was left over to be able to repave DPW. It did, it took a while to get three quotes, but I did finally get them. And they are in your packet and I'm looking for approval to accept total asphalt paving of Cass and Summers lot for $28,400 with the remaining balance not to exceed a total of $130,000 for both of them. Looking to start Cass and Summers before the end of the year and get it finished and then the DPW lot to commence it in the spring.
So moved. Motion by Deanne. Support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is for addition and maintenance of garage door openers at the DPW yards. We do have 14 garage doors. Eight of them currently have garage door openers. The ones that do not are the vehicles that we use daily and adding these would definitely help just for the guys and security because they will at least, they'll be locked when we leave. So out of that, most of the larger equipment does not, is not the day-to-day fleet that are used most more frequently. The new openers will help during the day with greater security and for easier access in the winter months. The addition of these six openers have both buildings fully equipped with the efficiency of department daily operations security. The funding would be split evenly between the buildings and grounds expenditures from street, water and sewer, and parks with no budget amended that will come from general funds. If you do go with this, I will make an amendment to take money from the sale of fixed assets, which you gave me the permission to do last council meeting when we were scrapping, cleaning up the yards and we did very well with this. So this will actually go right back to helping the yards. I did get three, I did call multiple companies. I did get only two. FJF is the one that I am requesting that you approve. They did install two of our doors and two of our openers, the newest ones, so they do know our building and they do know our openers. So I'm looking for the approval. So moved.
Support. Motion by Deanne, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
I've used FJF on my buildings and that sort of thing for my personal, you know, business. They always come through, so good company.
And I would like to add, the lot looks amazing built.
Thank you.
The guys, and I know the guys are very proud of the changes over there, too. So it looks like a different place, so thank you.
It really does, yeah. Biscuit and I will, sometimes she'll...
I see you a lot.
Yeah, sometimes she'll be like, "Let's go this way." All right, fine. And yeah, every time we go, it's... I was gonna say, "A little better, a little bit..." No, it's like big strides, you know, one after the other, so yeah, just wanted to...
Just, a comment, I should have said, you've instilled a new vitality in your department. I mean, the guys, they're taking pride in what they do. I've heard they like coming into work where it had degraded severely before. So it all starts at the top, so thank you. But again, tell them all thank you for all they're doing.
I certainly will and they do love to hear it, so.
Yep.
I went by with muffin and croissant and they loved it. I saw it, top dog.
Any further discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sorry.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And the second half of your...
So I will need to amend the budget of fiscal year 2024, the street department budget increasing by $2,210 each in accounts 101-441-693000, which is the sale of fixed assets, and 101-441-937000, building grounds maintenance.
Support, or I mean, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Sakura.
Good.
Support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Last one is the big one, Davis Lift Station Project. We did have this go out to bid twice. The first time they came around, the budget, the quotes were much more than what we had hoped for and what HRC had thought was going to happen. So we did rebid it, given an option of different... Instead of mirroring what we have at Sterrett and Utica Park, as in the same pumps and everything, we gave an option of giving different pumps, hopefully bringing the price down. And then we also gave an alternate option of being able to at least rehab the current pit and raising the panel at least up to grade so the guys having to go down there will not be, you know, as often. And then also, it would be a rehab of the whole pit with new pumps and, you know, redoing the floor, the walls. So it's not the ideal, the exact thing that was what we wanted. I know this has been going on much, much longer than I have been here, but I am very happy to at least be able to say that at least we got a good budget from Midwest Power Systems to be able to rehab that and at least make it safer and much better for our residents along Davis Street and in that area. So we did get five bids from it and the low bid was with Midwest Power Systems. And I'm not sure if the HRC's recommendation was in there, if you printed it. Okay, it came in after, but HRC did recommend it as well as going with this budgets, with this bid. So looking for city council to approve the alternate number one, Davis Lift Project bid for the amount of $392,500 from Midwest Power Systems through grant revenue 592-000569000372118 and the expenditure 592-536-937200372118.
I'll make a motion to do what you just said.
Support what you just said.
Motion by Sakura, support by O'Donnell. I would like to mention, we had originally budgeted, I believe it was $555,000 for the
full... $537,000.
$537,000, $537,000 in our grant submission for full replacement. So that's how out of whack the prices have gone since we got that grant. So this is coming from the MEDC enhancement grant that we got from, at that time, State Representative Farrington's office for 2.5 million. So there's gonna be a little bit of money that we had originally earmarked to go for lift station that won't be spent because we had budgeted or earmarked 500 and whatever it was. So that money can go towards our sanitary sewer lining so we can do more sewers than we had hoped to do. So it all works out.
Which goes out the bid soon, so.
Yep.
Question, Midwest is considerably less than everybody else. Good company?
According to HRC, they actually asked, you know, most of the companies on here are very reputable. HRC does work with Midwest Power Systems quite often, so they did, so.
Going back to the price, I have friends with a couple St. Clair Shores council people and we talk and they are saying the same thing. Bid prices are just coming in ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous because they've got you where they want you. you where they want you. So, it's, this is not unexpected. It's not what we want, but it's happening to everybody, so.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socorro.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report, Bill?
Last council meeting, we had the approval for the swing for Mrs. Zaramba, for her husband and son, that has been ordered. Mayor Calendino had the plaque priced out on that, so everything was priced out, and Mrs. Zaramba accepted the price on the swing and for the delivery, picked out where she would like it at Grant Park and also with the plaque, and then, so that is ordered. It's about six to eight weeks out for delivery on that. We'll install it at that point. Doing a lot of work around the city, obviously. Guys are doing great. I appreciate their hard work. I'll piggyback on Chief about Nightmare on Auburn. We did have guys there, you know, we were there at 9:00 AM setting up. It's unfortunate the weather didn't play well with us with our blowups, because they did look nice for the hour that they were up. I think I was the only one that got a picture of the pumpkin when it was up, so. It's harder to put those things down than it is to blow them up, I'll tell you that, so. Everything's going great, and just hoping, you know, keep making strides, so. Thank you very much for all the nice comments, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill. Treasurer is excused tonight. I'm sure he's going to have a lot of exciting information for us next meeting. Madam Clerk, report on administration.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just have to let you know that I, from last November's election, now nine days of early voting is going to happen starting in February with, some municipalities were doing it in November, but we don't have an election, so ours will be for the presidential primary in February. The county had asked, the Macomb County clerk had asked for us to see if we could pair up with other communities for the nineties of early voting, if possible. Not all of them did. I have met with the city clerk from Sterling Heights for, and we have come to an agreement, a municipal agreement for the nineties of early voting. This will not affect regular election day. Our still, still will have our three precincts opened here in Utica, but for the nineties of early voting, we would be paired up with the city of Sterling Heights at their community center. This will only be for federal and state elections. If it is just an election year where there's, it's just a local election or a school election, we wouldn't be paired up with them, we would do it ourselves. There is grant money coming from the state for elections, so all I have had to pay, or will have to pay Sterling Heights, I had to agree to pay for three election workers for the nine days, which I would have paid or will pay when we have them here anyway. So, it was no additional cost for the city to do that. I just wanted to let you know, and I'll have more information for you as it gets closer.
We'll have to make sure we get that word out to our residents.
To our residents, yes.
Water, put it on water bills, the cable channel.
I'll actually send, to all of our registered voters, I'll send out a postcard to them all, so. That is my...
That's everything?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. Parks and Rec, anything to report tonight?
I just want to say thank you to all the residents who came out, all the businesses who participated for our Nightmare on Auburn. It really was a great event, and, you know, we appreciate DPW, police, and, you know, everybody who came out, and I just, I know Tom Whitaker sent an email out to all the businesses, asking for them, their input and how, what they want to see changed, so please fill those out for any of the businesses who participated. And, yeah, I just, I want to kind of just thank everybody for coming out, because it was a fantastic event, especially for a first. We couldn't have asked, well, we could have asked Mother Nature for better weather, but you know what? It didn't pour. We're good. Didn't snow either, so I'll take what I can get, so, thank you.
Thank you. No report from historic district tonight. Ms. McGreal, anything from the city attorney?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. At this point, we open up the floor to anyone from the public who would like to speak to council. Everyone will be allotted three minutes. Is there anyone tonight who would like to speak to council? Yes, sir. If you could, give us your name and address, please.
Hi, Paul Weiss, I'm the owner of Steampunk Tap Room, 7722 Auburn Road. Thank you, council, mayor, for everything that you do for the city and for the businesses, I very much appreciate it. Like to just take a couple moments to talk a little bit more about the event, Nightmare on Elm Street, Nightmare on Auburn Street. As everyone stated, it was a great event, my personal opinion, you know, we could do more of that type of thing. I did have the opportunity to talk to the one business that the mayor had mentioned who's had some issues with it, and out of respect to him, he had to leave early, but I did want to just address three things that he had said. Number one, his concern was the quality of the event. He described the vendors as being the quality of a flea market. Again, this is not me, I'm just sharing this information. He also questioned the location, being on the road, his indication was perhaps we could do it in the parking lot by Jimmy John's. That apparently has been, the city has given money for that on various occasions, including the downtown district, the DDA at some point. Again, these are his opinions, not mine. And then, there was a shared concern. During the event, he indicated that people were walking around with open alcohol that they had received at the beer tent. They were walking on the street, they attempted to enter his business. I wasn't present at my business, I don't know if that occurred. My staff is not trained to deal with that, I would have, I'll have to deal with that in the future. However, to my understanding, that is not legal. First of all, no one can bring alcohol into my establishment other than a distributor. I can't even host what's called a bottle share, meaning people bring closed bottles and distribute them and share them among each other. MLCC prohibits anyone from bringing alcohol into my business. As far as I know, and police, you would know much better than I, you can't walk around with open intoxicants in, on a city street save for a social district. So, it was a bit problematic for him to have people trying to walk in with open intoxicants. That, again, I wasn't present, so I don't know that. But if it did occur, that would be a concern for me as well. That being said, in my opinion, what's good for Utica is good for me, and what's good for me is good for Utica. I love these events, more events means more business for me, more visibility. These are great things, these are things that I'd love to see. I would prefer, if possible, some better communication regarding parking and road closures, where the road is closed, what recommended parking would be for my patrons. If that was published in advance, that'd be great, because then I could direct my, I could train my customers, I could let them know, "Hey, look, road's going to be closed, but you can park here, here, and there," and that'd be great, you know. You can still come in, you can still patronize my business. That being said, and the other thing is with communication is, much of the media that I saw around it was directed as this being a children's event. Me owning a bar, I hadn't even thought about opening early that day. I probably could have done more business had I known, had I understood what the event entailed, so. I guess if I, and this might be on me as well.
Time's up.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor and Council for doing a great event, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to address? Yes, sir.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Mayor. My name's Gordy, I live at 7557 Greeley Street. I was wondering, this year, for I think it is the Christmas lighting, if you guys let the Grinch do anything that he wants?
I can't answer and open...
I'm not talking about breaking the law, nothing like that.
We'll have to have a discussion on that one, all right?
Okay.
Thank you. Is that all you answer?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so you know, we've already started planning the Christmas event, so it's definitely going to happen.
Well, he got loose early.
The Grinch did.
Yes.
Uh-oh.
I couldn't keep him locked up. He got somewhere, broke out of cage, so. If I was to see him, don't, you know, let him be, because he's not going to do nothing illegal, but he might take the new cars or something, play around with them, but he might give them back, I don't know. It's up to the Grinch.
Hopefully, the Grinch will obey all laws.
Oh, he knows, he knows.
And hopefully, he's aware that there are many security cameras all pointed in the parking lot that are watching the brand-new cars, so.
Well, if they bring them to him, no, if they let him play with them, let him play with it, he'll bring them back. But he can't, I can't say what happens to what, to the car, when he brings them back.
All right, well, thank you for coming in, speaking to council tonight, and an early Merry Christmas to you, okay? Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
All right, Andy Jarris, 45214, customer. I just want to say thank you. Congratulations on the new vehicles. The police department, fire department, DPW, mayor, I, it's really nice to live in the city of Utica.
It's nice to have you here.
But, thank you, thank you. But I just want to say, it's been great. It just, the experience that everyone's having in the streets of Utica, it's great. Also, I'm really thankful that Miguel's Cantina is coming here, so that's, you know, again, good stuff. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Denise Davis, 4543 Engel, but I own Sergeant Reds. I just want to echo Nightmare on Auburn was awesome. To piggyback a little bit of what he was saying is that we weren't sure what we were doing yet, like, we didn't have candy, to be honest, so I think next year will be better, because we'll be more prepared, and we'll know what we want to bring out, and I think people will be more aware of what kind of event it's going to be, that it's full families, little kids, and big kids, and everything like that, so. But I thought it was awesome, and I know everyone's really worried about what kind of community we are, obviously by the turnout tonight and the conversations tonight, so I think that kind of event is what builds the community, it's what we need, that shows we're a small-town, hometown community, get the kids out on the street, hang out, music, that's what we need, so, that's all.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, Sergeant, when you get home to all red, we said hi.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak to council? No? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Socorro, support by Deanne. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socorro.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.